The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
All right, I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. And first, I'll turn it over to John Kasha, our Chief Financial Officer, to read the statement of public notice, and then Dr. Langenfeld has some opening remarks.
Well, good afternoon. Today is Board deliberation afternoon for us. And per Wisconsin statute 65.90, staff and board shall formulate a proposed budget, hold a public hearing, and adopt a budget identifying expected revenues, expenditures, and fund balances. This afternoon, I'll be going through the budget as an overview. Wednesday will be an opportunity for any public participation in addition to me presenting further information. And then, two weeks from this evening would be that time for formal adoption, which includes the tax levy set by the Board of Education. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Langenfeld.
Thank you. I know John Kasha and his department have been working tirelessly because the numbers are just coming in from the state. So again, trying to give you the most updated 2018-19 budget, which is really a budget that is balanced and a budget that really has two years of opportunity in it because we knew the biennial budget. So it's always nice to know what our expenditures are for two years and be able to plan accordingly. As you recall, in 1718, we had the opportunity to have operational referendum that passed. And you'll see in 18, or 1718, we did some catch-up in technology and did large investments in technology. This year in technology, for example, we're really looking at the network itself and doing some investments in making sure that we have the wide-area network as part of Brown County. So, and the Board approved that some time ago. So to really be able to ensure that we have infrastructure in place for technology is one of the important pieces of this budget. But I know that there's an infographic that John will be sharing with you in terms of some of the highlights of the budget. So I'm gonna just turn it back to you, John, and thank you for all your work on this and for all of your team as well.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna start off posting the agenda. And again, what I want to accomplish this evening really are twofold. Number one, provide a clear explanation as to how revenue is generated through state statute that we base our tax levy upon. And then, two, give you an overview of all of our funds and the budgeting process and procedure. Please understand, we're already one-quarter of the way through our budget at this point. The planning for the budget process begins early in the year, early in the calendar year. So at this time last year, we were already working towards this budget. It takes shape over a long period of time involving, as Dr. Langenfeld indicated, a number of people. So we're here today to report on those items and provide a backdrop so you can understand the tax levy question that ultimately will need to be voted upon two weeks from this evening. Okay? As you can see, the three bullet points on the agenda. I'll try and point out, too, again, the important factors in our budget process, provide a budget summary. And I know that this was posted Friday, so you've had a few days to look at it, but you really have a couple of weeks. And I also invite you, if you do have questions that you want to contact me or stop in to see me, if something doesn't pop up here this evening, or Wednesday, or next, the next meeting we have two weeks from this evening, feel free to do that. I hope to be able to answer any questions I can. If tonight you have any questions that I don't know the answer to, I'll write them down and certainly Bill will provide them to you. Finally, the budget proposal summary. So you have, again, a better idea of what we're talking about in terms of the tax levy and the budget and how they are interconnected. Four key numbers that our budget is based upon occur very late in the process. What I mean by that is this. We have to post notice for this meeting 15 days before the hearing or the final vote. So you see four dates up there, October 1st and October 15th. Now granted, there are a number of other factors involved, but these are key state numbers that we generate. And I'll show you in a moment where they fit into the puzzle in terms of how they determine what revenue we can bring to the district because they are all interrelated. Fall property value is the first. And we've had an estimate since last, I would say, last spring, have refined it and came in very close to what ended up being the fall number. And I'll be sharing with you that number shortly. Third Friday count is the second large number that we look to because it generates revenue. And it's our September 3rd Friday count. And I'll show you where we're at in our enrollment. And certainly, it is something that we pay close attention to. And you, as board members, should know where we're at in this category. Third and fourth, these numbers came out this morning. So again, we had to post for the public last Friday a budget that you'll hear or see tonight and Wednesday, but we will refine it based on these two numbers. Number three, the largest single source of revenue that our district enjoys is equalized aid. And we'll spend some time talking about equalized aid and how important it is for you as a board member to have a general understanding of the significance that it plays to our district. I mean, that is a large percentage of our budget. And there's a lot of moving parts there, but I'll do my best to try and help you with that. Finally, the voucher impact. The voucher impact you see is $4.7 million. I will get into and discuss exactly the impact we have on our district with that number that, again, was released today. So we'll have to make some adjustments, but again, I'm very comfortable in our projections across the board that what we present tonight, you'll feel good about in a couple of weeks. It certainly will not be higher than mill rate than we're proposing today. So again, these are four very, very important flags for us. The next handout you see is generated as a summary for each of you to look at some basic talking points. And I'll get into the specifics tonight, Wednesday, and two weeks from this evening. Number one, the approximate size of the budget's $274.3 million. So if you wanted some context, I think it's important you know as a board member how large of an operation we have here. As Dr. Langenfeld stated at the beginning, it is a balanced budget. People need to understand and know that. That means revenues are gonna equal our expenses. The third point is that it's the lowest mill rate proposal here tonight since 2010. And I think that's significant for you to know and understand. You see over the last three years, so again, when the referendum was proposed here at 10.16, the proposal that we have on the table this evening is 10.01. And again, you multiply that times 1,000 for property homeowners across our district. Fourth point, property value. The average property value for our district rose 3.42%. I'll have a chart in a moment here showing where we've been and where we're at today. Notice there's a range there as well. And I'll get into the tax implications in the future as far as that goes. That is not unusual. You do always have a range. They're always not going to be the same. But I think the public needs to hear it and know that you can see property values fell in some areas, rose in others. The range was negative 9.35 all the way up to 6.22. And we'll show you where that occurred.
Is that range within the district?
Yes. Yep. Now, in terms of dollars, what does that mean? So again, I've tried to provide you with that range of dollars. The estimate you see there is a decrease for some taxpayers all the way up to potentially on an average home. And an average home, we have at $150,000. It's a little higher than average, but I'd rather present that number to you here today. And that could be up to $80. So you're looking at an average increase at the 3.42 of about $38 per year. So that's what we're talking about here in terms of the tax implications with a range, where the average is that we're talking about when we're proposing the budget. The final two items, I think Claudia spoke to briefly, the one on the left towards the bottom of the page at our last meeting. And that is the investment in special education. So this year alone, and you'll see in Fund 27, you have an invested interest of $3.6 million increase and $6 million over the last two years. I'll discuss maintenance of effort with you as well so you have a better understanding of what that means and what the implications are by investing the kind of funds that we're investing into special education. There's federal requirements that we need to follow. And we've certainly done that. Finally, the alignment with strategic directions that come from the Board of Education. They come from you. I have two things on my whiteboard in my office. One is our bond rating. It's very important in terms of our liabilities and how we can shore that up, and we have taken steps to do that. You may not be aware, but the financial stability is what our operation is in charge of. The second is, it says "Board approved." Why are these two things important for me from a perspective of financial stability? But also, what you approve has implications that we financially need to manage. If you approve pathways, other opportunities for students, you have to understand that we have a thick set of revenue and that the expenses will need to be managed to accommodate the wishes of the Board of Education. So whatever you decide as a group has implications to our budget. And often, you know, during the last year, you know, it's been challenging, for me to say the least, of making sure that our administrative team and our staff understand the implications of spending and how we need to manage the operation. It is a struggle that everyone wants to do the best thing for our programming, but you have to understand that other side, too. And I've communicated with many of you in the past about making sure that if you're asking questions, that there are financial components discussed because it's important in the long-term stability of the district to manage that properly. So it's, again, very important with that alignment. Next up. Property valuation just shows you graphically where we've been over the last 10 years or so. Last year, you may or may not recall, because most of you were here, we had a property increase of 4.09. Now we're at 3.42. You see a remarkable recovery from some very distressed properties. And remember that most of that occurred in '08, '09, and '10. But property values do tend to lag that drag. And that's exactly what we have here. You know what, I'm gonna go back to this because I put something in the, or I hope I go back. Fair market value. I put something in the graphic because I do want board members to know certain terms. Fair market value is important. When it comes to your taxes, that's what we're looking at when you're applying a mill rate. And if you have discussions with the public about tax rates and how theirs were calculated, it's important that you understand how that really is because there are a number of terms out there that can be confusing. And again, I'm just trying to make it as clear as possible. Here's the third Friday count. And you see we're down to 21, 290. It's a 1.60 decrease off of a decrease from the previous year. Now, make no mistake, student enrollment is vitally important. There are a lot of factors going on here. It could be open enrollment, it could be vouchers, it could be census. There are a number of things that this type of a meeting isn't probably the right time. But I do think the Board has a concern for enrollment, of course, but it is a generator of revenue. And I'll show you the impact shortly.
John, just a clarification. This number reflects third Friday count, so a student who open enrolls would be in that count. Is that accurate?
That is. And again, you have to be very careful with enrollment numbers with the following factors at play. Open enrolled students, in, out, and voucher students. There's actually two counts for the year that DPI puts together. The first is the third Friday count. That includes open enrolled students because we have an expense for them. And of course, we generate revenue for them as well. Now, a census count is more about bodies and seats. Or if we get a census from the county, you're talking about birth rates. Now, we have two different studies, one internally and one externally. I think it is something to consider to look at doing another external survey to get a better handle on our trend line. With all of the innovation that the district proposes for various opportunities for students, I think putting people in facilities that are sustainable are going to be critical down the road. And every student has a generating factor. And of course, when students leave, that will pull on the district's expenses as well. Again, I don't know that, you know, this type of a meeting is appropriate, but at some point, enrollment analysis in detail would be recommended because it is very important. The capacities of our buildings. I know that we've had various committees look at it. And it's important that you see what occurred on our latest count. Now, the second Friday in January is a count that we used for equalized aid. So that number's critical as well. If we're looking at $156 million and it's partially based on your student enrollment, that's an important number for us. It's a very important number for us. But it's complex. It's complex with open enrollment, what parents elect to do. And again, something I did want to highlight this evening to make sure that you pay close attention to our goal.
So just to clarify then, that number of 21,290 students reflects the district's total student membership, which means not only the students who are attending Green Bay Public Schools, but the students who are Green Bay Public School in their attendance area who chose to open and enroll. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
So the decline that we see is not the kids that we just described, but rather, we don't know if they are students who exited the school district and are no longer in our attendance area at all. Is that accurate? That could be one of them. Or students who may be homeschooled? Or students who never came and we would have no way of knowing?
That's correct. That's correct.
And the voucher kids are not in there either?
That's correct. And that is a very difficult number to get a hold of. And in fact, I'll have some points on that in a moment. But again, it's a key number for all of you to know about in the future. Okay, as I stated at the beginning, equalized aid, general state aid are the same thing. So again, I didn't mean to confuse you with a different title here. But this number, in understanding the importance to our district, is what I want to make sure I leave with you here this afternoon. Dr. Langenfeld's involved in the Blue Ribbon Commission. And we certainly have had spirited discussions over the past year about the funding formula. Because I feel like I can do that. I need to be able to provide a base for her as she participates in this statewide initiative. And I always come back to this number because it is critical for property values like Green Bay. And again, if you're a high property value district, you're not potentially receiving any equalized aid. Equalized aid is to do that. It's to balance property values across the state of Wisconsin. It's very complicated. Again, I'm not gonna sit here in the course of a few moments to tell you the answer of it. But at the same time, I think all of you can and can appreciate how important it is to have stakeholders involved at the state level when it comes to something that will impact our district so severely. Now, where aids have gone in the past, I'd say, four years, have moved to what's called a per pupil aid amount. And you'll see that in the book, and I'll be bringing it to your attention. But what that aid is, is essentially disequalizing. They're giving the same amount of money to us as they're giving to a high property value. So again, that money in the past would have made its way through the system of equalized aid and given proportionally to those districts that required it. So it's a lot of money. It involves levy credits as well. And a very, I'm just trying to find the right words because it is a challenge. And with the election coming up in a few weeks, you know, I think it's fair to say that that's going to certainly cause us to move in one direction or the other. Maybe it will continue the way we've been moving in the last three to four years in terms of distribution of aids, or maybe that will change. I don't know. But when we looked at projections last year to where I would be here tonight, I think it was fairly simple to make the projections because we were in the second year of a biennial budget. So it was very easy for us. We've been charting this since this time last year. And if you look back on the January 29th discussions that we had about possibilities and then compare them to where we're at today, we're in a great financial position. I feel like we've addressed some liabilities that we need to address and position ourselves regardless of what happens in the next few weeks with our election to maximize the revenue that could come to our district. So again, this is the single most important revenue that we have. All right. Now I want to bring into the book for a short period of time here. And I want to start with general fund revenues. Now, if you open up the book, you see we've included some fact sheets from our communication department. I think it's very, very important to provide a backdrop for the district on what we're talking about here. What size of a district, how many students. Many people are surprised that we have 41 different locations. And you know as board members, to run that type of an operation, it takes quite a team to make that happen. On page four, you also see some thanks that need to be acknowledged, not only here, but probably need to be acknowledged more often. And that is all of the people that are responsible for putting this together. It certainly is not me. This journey begins, as I said, early in the calendar year and involves all of our operations. So we begin at the building level throughout the district and move those through staffing, which does occur generally speaking in spring, and then refined in late summer, early year. Now you'll see that staffing, of course, makes up the majority of our budget. And I'll talk about some things with our expenditures across the board. But understand what a general fund is. That's our Fund 10, if you ever hear that, Fund 10. That's what's referred to as our general fund. Now notice something right off the bat. This is important, please, I hope you hear this. Last year, 1718, we had revenues of $274 million, okay? This year, our projection is $274.3 million. Therein lies just a small picture of what our models have projected, and that is fairly flat revenue. There are factors that we can influence. But if you have fairly flat revenue, and this is one year of it right here, and your expenditures are moving just at CPI, you're putting yourself in a position where you're gonna be deficit spending if you're not watching very, very closely. And we were able to avoid it this year. And I believe certainly with planning, we'll be in a good position moving forward. But I want you to understand, if revenues only go up that amount, wait till you see how much expenditures go up, which only went up 1.6%, which is less than inflation. So we were very hard on that side of the ledger. The factors in general revenue. Students, again, are a factor in the revenue that we can generate, and I'll show you in a moment. The per pupil aid increase did provide us with $4.5 million. The amount that we could levy for, so understand that we are in a system where the amount of money that can be generated is determined by state statute. We can't just continue to tax for additional resources. We are limited. You see the equalized aid. Now, I list miscellaneous state and federal aids. When you look at the revenues on the subsequent pages, you see that it somewhat washes. However, Lori, if you could, I hope from there, bring this forward. Now, I want to try and explain what this is as briefly as I can. That's perfect for now. On the left side of the screen, I hope I won't hit anyone with lasers. Here we go. This number right here is the revenue generator from our third Friday counts. So what you see over here are the last three years, okay? In this number, you will see in a moment, will produce our revenue on this side of this spreadsheet. So again, this is our revenue limit worksheet that generates the money that you'll see from our taxes. If you go down a little further, or excuse me, up, so we can see the bottom a little further, there you go. Our property values are right here. So the number that we showed you at 3.42 is placed in this worksheet. So your property value in your enrollment now pushes us to the right side of the sheet. So if we could go back up, there you go, to this area right here. So we have property value, we have revenue, and the most that we can generate will be right here. And then we have some exceptions. And I'm not gonna go through everything, but one of them should look familiar. But 16.5 is the referendum that was approved. And then even this 4.2 million is a voucher number. So there's a lot of numbers going here. I didn't want to put it up for any other reason to show you that the process then creates, there's the equalized aid. Go down a little further. Ultimately, our levy, and there it is. So you place this with enrollment, property value, equalized aid, vouchers, and you generate the revenues that form your budget. It limits, it limits what you can bring in and ultimately gives you this number down here, which is what we're talking about. And you see there's decimal points there, but there's your 10.01. That's how it happens. Each of you could do this. I'm confident in that. But I did want to show you But I did want to show you that when you provide it from a big picture, the things that go into it and the influences they may have in the future. Thank you, Lori. Now your revenues, of course, in detail, and again, if you come back to any questions, are on pages five through eight. And then we begin with our expenditures on page eight. And there's, you know, generally a lot of emphasis on expenditures. I get that. I understand it. And there's a lot of movement going on here. So you could look at one expenditure object and wonder, why did, and you picked the number, why did object 221 go up by $4 million as an example? And it didn't, but I'm just suggesting. In order to look at this holistically, I tried to put up on the screen what I think is important. First of all, as I stated earlier, the expenditures are projected to go up $4.3 million, which is a 1.6% increase. I certainly challenge businesses and school districts alike to try and come in on that type of number. It's a relatively low number. But then if you look at the details, where we have increased salaries and benefits at 12.1 million, you know, it's certainly, it's certainly a lot larger than 1.6. Well, we've been able to look at contracted services and capital and essentially add some capital. And I'll talk about what we plan to do in classrooms for those not impacted by the referendum. Because of the final line item, which is our debt transfer, had that $11.4 million not been paid off early, that's the type of situation that we have to forecast and look at. Last year, we went ahead and paid $4 million earlier so we wouldn't be in a position for the next two years where that money then couldn't be redeployed. Another large factor is our Fund 27 transfer that we have to pay out of Fund 10. And I will be addressing that one in a moment because there could be some movement there. So again, as you look at expenditures on page eight through page 12, I would like to bring your attention to page 12. Because what's important, I think, for a question you're potentially asked is, you know, what are we spending in classrooms? And this chart is very helpful with an overall by accounting function. So we have to code individuals or programs based on what service are they providing for our students.
John, page 10, 11, 12, I think I missed a particular, but upper right-hand corner it's saying 2019 actual for expenditures. That should be budget, correct?
That's correct.
I think we'd spent all that.
Well, we had some type, or not typing, we had some formatting issues with this book this morning. No, we haven't gotten there yet.
I can appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so back to page 12. Again, the reason I bring this to your attention is, people might bring it to your attention. And as board members, understanding that the implications of you approving hiring, because you're approving hiring, right? It's teachers, it's administration, it's any position, not any position, I shouldn't say it that way. The majority of our positions are reached through a process which ultimately you're approving. So knowing what or where those positions are, it's very important as a board member in these shift depending on needs and directions from you in terms of where money or expenses are allocated. Again, there's a lot here, not trying to move through too quickly, but at the same time, I don't want to delve, but I will be happy to answer any questions about specifics that maybe I have, maybe I don't have, because we've spent a lot of time answering questions on specifics, and that's okay. That's what we're here to do. The next one I want to speak about is special education. And that is Fund 27. The executive director was here about a month ago describing for all of you her position and how she arrives at staffing levels. So again, I'm not here to go through staffing levels either in 10 or 27, but you as a board member deserve a full explanation and understanding of what that means. So just as with Fund 10, on the revenue side, there, over the past few months, and we've heard Dr. Langenfeld refer to this often, has having to do with this transfer. Now, what exactly does that mean? And when I highlight local funding support 67.34%, I want you to understand that, that the money that we are transferring from Fund 10 to pay for special education is not being reimbursed by the federal government or the state government. There have been recently some discussions about increasing the reimbursable rate. I do believe there could be some movement on it. I'm optimistic. However, I do want you to remember, we spent $33 million this year from our general fund to pay for special education. Don't forget equalized aid, though, what that number was. It was $156 million. Now, $33 million is substantial. I'm not, I'm not saying it isn't. And any amount would be helpful. But again, I want you to recognize what we're talking about in terms of paying for things out of one fund and understanding where we take it from. Now, you'll see on the expense side on page 21, it shows you in detail in the majority of, I mean, it's very clear, the majority of our expenses come from staffing, and quite a bit. In fact, as late as Thursday, there was a discussion about adding potentially more nurses. And we came to an understanding that we were going to add three more FTEs, and you know, I've got to find a place for that. So you sit there and wonder, well, where does that come from? Well, it doesn't come from thin air. You've got to be able to find it, and you've got to be able to look at the operation and provide for emergencies that do occur. But there's a limit to that. There is a limit. But we will move forward. So that means this expense fund will increase even greater unless we have some reduction somewhere else within Fund 27. Now, at this point, we're not planning on it, just so you know. But it does move us to what, this concept of maintenance of effort, I want you to at least, if you don't have an understanding of it, it's, it's all simple enough where each of you I know can understand it and help. Because when it comes to decisions on expenses that involve special education, I do want you to understand what it means. If we spend $45 million, I'll just leave it at that number, on special education, maintenance of effort means by federal mandate, next year, we need to spend it an equal or greater amount. Now, there are some factors, aidability and the local dollar amount, but that's the general concept. It's fairly simple. So if we now employ three new RNs, or I don't even know if they'll be RNs, I shouldn't have said it that way, but three nurses, we probably are going to be increasing the amount of commitment that the district will make to approximately $250,000, approximately. Well, we've now moved our floor, haven't we? Because now we have to maintain that effort moving forward. Now CPI generally takes care of it all by itself. But if you have a reduction in the number of students or retirees, you'll have to spend up to that number to meet that maintenance of effort. So again, when people talk about it, I want you to have a better understanding of what it is. Yes?
Okay. The maintenance of effort is not dependent on the number of students who identify as special education?
It does play a factor.
Okay. So it's not, they all of a sudden had a drop of 50% in our special ed population, we wouldn't have to spend 45?
It's not proportional, but it definitely plays a factor.
Okay.
It's a great point.
Okay.
You mentioned nurses. Is it required that they are accounted for in Fund 27?
No, not entirely, and they're not, as a matter of fact. So again, there are certain positions that through DPI and our state will inform us what that percentage breakdown will be. 8317, school sites are a good example, guides, counselors, nurses. So those that work between or work with some special education students and not entirely will have a blended rate.
John?
Yes.
One question. I'm understanding there is a school now in our area that is taking special education vouchers and the reimbursement for those vouchers and the potential, could you just speak to that? And I don't know if that's in the budget or where you put that, but I know we talked about it.
Oh, no. It's called special needs vouchers. And if you are a private school and you have the opportunity to apply to the state to qualify, and what, what it would mean is, instead of a voucher rate of a K8 student, which this year will be $7,754 that they would receive, or a 912 student, which will receive a rate of $8,400, they will receive $12,431. It is a very similar, if not identical, number as an open enrolled special education student. There are some differences, of course, and there are differences in this sense. If they spend over $18,000 a year on the student, they'll receive 90% back. And when you hear about a 90% reimbursable for private schools, that's where it comes from. So they're not getting 90% right off the bat, but they are receiving the open enrolled dollar amount, which is more than a regular ed student. So at $12,400, we had seven students that will be receiving special needs vouchers this year for the first time. So a school in Green Bay or in our district, let's just put it that way, did qualify, and those students have, or will be attending. Overall, again, if you go back to the revenue limit worksheet, we're talking about vouchers. Last year, 1718, there was a 2% cap for our district. It's being lifted by 1% every year. So last year, approximately, we levied for about $2.6 million. And this year, we're up to $4.6 million. So again, it's about 600 students on average, because it's not the same amount for every student as I, as I mentioned. K8, $7,754 per student, 912, $8,400 per student. So on that revenue limit worksheet, $4.6 million, we add on top of our levy. So we are, you are, we are taxing for those dollars, and then we have an equal expense on the other side of the ledger. So we have an expense of that same amount that we are levying for. Yes?
And just as a follow-up then, if a student in a private school has a special needs voucher and they exceed $18,000 in expenditures, then the state will start to reimburse that additional at 90%. And the reimbursement rate for public school students, special ed is at what percent?
25, 25 point, and I have it on there, 25.73, I think.
And that would explain why a number of school districts already across the state are putting out statements to the legislature about this, so.
And so, private school gets a special needs voucher of $12,000, regardless of how much they have to spend to educate that student. They don't have to prove that they spent $12,000 on that student, is that correct?
Yes.
It's the amount above, and then if they get to 18, it's the amount above 18.
That they receive a 90% reimbursement.
A 90% reimbursement. So who pays that $6,000?
The state.
If it's 12 and 18?
Oh, excuse me. That private school.
Private school does.
Yes.
And then, okay, so we don't pay anything above the $12,000?
Here's where I think it's based upon. There is a high cost formula that public schools can find reimbursables. However, you know, certainly been my experience that you would need to exceed about $30,000 to receive any type of reasonable reimbursable. And in fact, it, because we are highly aided, sometimes that revenue can work against our equalized aid payment. And so you need to be careful about revenues, when they're being brought in and how they affect our cost sharing. But it's not applied very often in public schools for those reasons, especially in school districts with lower property value, because it will affect potential revenues in the future.
Is this the usual rules then with this new special ed voucher, that whether they're getting the $12,000 or the $12,000 plus dipping into some of the 90% basket or whatever? Usual rules for voucher schools, you can kick the kid out the day after the third Friday and keep the money? Pretty usual?
That is my understanding.
The voucher school.
What I thought you were, that's my understanding. What I thought you were going to ask was, if they could not provide services, that the public school would have to provide them, and that absolutely is accurate.
Oh, so it also, so they could, they could kick the kid out and send them back, or they could keep the money, have us go over there and provide services, and we pay for it while they keep the money? There's all sorts of options that would involve the voucher school keeping the money and not providing the education, different pathways, or providing some of the education. Okay.
Well, again, I, I'm not ignoring these funds, and I'm going to point out a couple things about each of these. Because while I don't expect maybe each of you to be an expert on it, I do want you to know what these are. And many of you are very tuned in to our expenditures and revenues, and I'm just trying to help. So again, the lingo's important, and Fund 21 is essentially, if individuals provide us with gifts, an opportunity for us to account for it, more of an in and out fund for all school districts. Indian Ed on page 15, you might want to take a look at that. Revenues have decreased. I believe the board is aware of that, and it's certainly our goal to make sure or see if we can bring that back up to where we were. And I'm not doing anything but trying to make sure, you know, I'm recognizing that here for you this afternoon. A head start, you're going to be hearing from them soon about finishing off and looking ahead, two different things, from Sally, and it's a substantial budget. It's an operation that impacts a lot of kids. So again, I am not trying to do anything but value your time, and I've asked for some of these programs to provide you with a summary of who they employ and who they serve and where are they, and, you know, an introduction for our public as well. Because this document, as last year's document, are on our website, along with our audits from the last seven years. You know, they need to be there. People need to see what, see what we're doing.
So, um, Indian Ed Fund 22, I, I believe that, I don't know where, I don't know what the point was at which any, uh, formal action was taken, but I, I believe that there was a, a pretty clear direction that, um, since it was, um, since the drop never should have happened, it was, um, staff error. We were not going to, um, dis, disinfect the students, and we were going to keep those positions full. Do those positions, uh, have to be reflected on a different line, but will do the same exact job?
Yes, and they're reflected in Fund 10. So we've moved the expense to Fund 10, and our hope is to bring it back, which will free up, uh, opportunities in, in our general fund. Okay. Okay, on page 24 is our debt service fund. And it, it's really two different funds. Uh, our regular debt schedule, and our energy exemption, uh, dollar amounts. You've noticed that we've levied a little more, because we're proposing some refunding in the spring. And based on the numbers that came in this morning, you know, I think we're at around $1.6 million, but we look to save by a refunding of close to $6 to $7 million. We're trying to position for the next couple years, and, and a discussion we'll be having in the future about, uh, opportunities, both from an operational, but also from a capital perspective. So that's what that extra dollar amount is. It's not unusual. We defeased money last year. And remember, that's paying debt off early. Here, we're going to refund, so we're going to restructure our debt schedule to provide an opportunity, maybe in a year or two. So we're kind of pushing the opportunity out a bit, because I don't know that decisions have been made in, in order for us to act. So it's buying us time, but it's also saving the district money in the tune of $6 to $7 million. And those things, you know, can't be overlooked, and you as board members need to know that. And that, that's a key item for us. So that's why we have on the levy.
Question on, uh, on the revenue for Fund 30 there. That $14.8, says local property taxes. Is that coming out of the $71.8 that's in Fund 10? Or is that in addition to that $71.8? I think we'll say for local tax, local tax revenue.
Right. The $68.25 million that we levied for in the past, or I shouldn't say that one. We received $68.25 out of our referendum. So we received the money. We have a debt schedule. We then levy to pay off the debt schedule. And the 14 point, is it eight or six?
$14.8.
$14.8 is a debt payment schedule. So we tax for it, and it includes that debt, and includes all of our debt collectively. So we have a schedule that says, you know, this year we're going to pay $14.6, and, and we have that schedule for the board, of course, if you ever want to see it. So we can subsequently provide opportunities, potentially for additional spending without raising our mill rate. As we, you know, again, you're going to hear from the public if all of a sudden we're spiking and dropping things. You know, people don't seem to respond very positively. They, they want to see something fairly flat. So that $14.8 pays off a portion of that debt. That's a long answer to that question. Hopefully that helped.
I'll talk to you later.
Okay. Fund 40 is the expensing of the money that I just referred to. So Mr. Stengel's behind me, and I know he's spent the last couple of years. And we've got another year or so to go with a tremendous amount of work across the district, impacting, uh, numerous schools. And in addition, we're looking this year to do some remodeling of some classrooms at the majority of our elementaries. We have an opportunity to modernize and bring up some of those buildings that weren't impacted by the referendum. So again, we've been able to provide, I would say approximately $1.8 to $1.9 million in addition to all the work that Mr. Stengel and his crew, and all of our people are doing at the referendum level to impact a lot more schools. And in terms of expenses, those type of expenses are one-time expenses, and are much easier to manage down the road. And I want you to understand that concept as well, as opposed to a staff member. Staff members have legacy costs that continue to rise. And you, you need to balance what we do as an operation, and if we have opportunities to do one-time improvements, that those are very beneficial to our bottom line and provide opportunities in other areas in the future. Pete?
Just, just as a follow-up, as we start to, what, what you're referring to is more flexible seating and more modern furniture in some of our schools that were not part of the referendum. The referendum schools typically have gotten additional resources to create more flexible spaces. And also, um, even in some of our schools, for example, they're still using the big flip-top desks that, that don't allow group work, where you can work in small teams and so forth. So what John had our executive directors for elementary do is identify the schools and kind of take inventory as to what they have around their furniture needs, and then come back. So that's where that allocation will go, to give them more modern furniture and the ability to do more flexible grouping based on what they're currently, um, teaching, you know? So it really fits where they're headed. And many of our schools, you see that in, but, but to really make sure that it's equitable across the district was the intention as well.
Uh, next up, food service. On page 28. And again, this is a large operation with almost 100 employees and a $10 million budget. There are a number of school districts in the state of Wisconsin that are even close to this size. Large operation. And I think what's very impressive, is the number of meals served last year. 3.1 million meals. Again, they work hard for our students year-round. And again, because I'm not going through in detail, it doesn't, uh, or should not indicate how important this is for us as a district. The details are listed there. Their staff, uh, puts together this budget. And again, uh, please take some time to look at that. I've included the meal prices at the bottom this year, so you know what, what kids are paying. That's important. It's important you know that. Because sometimes you have families that, that struggle, and of course, there are procedures and processes in place. But for those that will pay or do need to pay, those are determined essentially by the federal government. Fund 72 is a trust fund on page 30. That means scholarships, of course, through our high schools. And we hold, uh, typically a CD for our distribution with interest to the principal. Again, very typical of virtually every school district in the state. Though, there are some foundations outside of the, the district that may hold their own scholarships. But in our books, um, you see the assets listed there. Last fund is Fund 80. And we do fact, we do tax for Fund 80. On page 32. And I even placed some further detail on it, so you understood that Fund 80 is a little different. You'll see it coming up, that we tax for. Meaning, we could tax, uh, an unlimited amount. You have to be able to document what those costs are. And you see the three bullet points on, on the PowerPoint in general. But we spend a lot of time and resources with some people that are very dedicated to serving our community interests. Again, the difference is we levy for it, and you'll see that coming up. All right. Some of you, again, are seasoned veterans, and I, I'm just, I think it's important for me to give you what I think's important for you to understand in terms of the language. Okay? The difference between these terms, and they're often confused. Mill rate. Mill rate is what the Board of Education, when you spoke about your referendum, referred to often. 10.16, the mill rate was not going to increase. That mill rate is the dollar amount that you generate times 1,000 that form property taxes, right? So what I have on top could be another way to look at this. How much you levy divided by the fair market value. There's fair market value again. So when you get your taxes, or people ask about taxes, please just focus in on that. It's important. Now, the first bullet point says the rate. The rate that, that we're going to propose is spread out equally among all of our taxpayers. That's eight municipalities. And the range that we talked about earlier, and I'll show you probably on Wednesday, is the breakdown from the negative nine to the 6.2. But the average turns out to be 3.42. The levy increase, so the amount of money we, we're going to generate, because you could bring the, the mill rate down, but since property values went up, you actually are raising the amount of levy brought into the school district. Last year, it was 10.10. This year, it's 10.01. I could have made it a little easier, but I, I just had to go with it. So, again, last year, it was 10.10. This year, it will be proposed at 10.01. Easiest way to think about it is a $100,000 home. A $100,000 home at 10.10 is $1,010 in taxes, right? A $100,000 home at 10.01 is $1,001 in taxes. Use that same math when you're calculating. And I have plenty of demonstrations coming up. Probably more on Wednesday. And again, that mill rate is a decrease. I'm going to try and summarize by, again, reminding you that we're working with a balanced budget. Staffing and all raises that were approved by the board are budgeted. Here, I'm reminding you, we have a debt refunding. Now there, I have 2.5. It's going to be a little lower because of the numbers that came out today. I don't want to move our mill rate unnecessarily. But that bottom bullet point is going to stand. Here is historically where we've been. And we are proposing to bring the mill rate down to its slowest point since 2010, 2011. And you see where we've been historically, at least over the last decade. As I've tried to remind you throughout this, there are some things that will need some tweaking because of the numbers that came out this morning. Nothing that will substantially impact anything that we're doing or discussing here tonight. I certainly have provided an opportunity to handle anything. The voucher number, there could be some salary or minor staffing. The three positions for the FTEs, for the nurses, are an example of that. So I'll be changing just some objects and some functions to make that happen. And understand, if we are a quarter of the way through the budget, this is a working document. It, it, it has to have some level of flexibility to it, as all do. But it also sets the stage for what we're doing next year. Next year has begun. Now, the election, as, as I mentioned at the beginning, will be important. But we have modeled for you, and I showed you in January, where we are aiming at this particular point. And more specifics, uh, will move forward as soon as that biennial is set. But that biennial, I think it's fair to say, won't occur, well, I'm, I'm just assuming it's not going to occur until late in, uh, late, late December. So we're not going to be able to move forward with some things that we've been able to do this year, and that you agreed to do early enough, which I think does help us. We'll be, have to look at restrained, uh, expenses and spending because of that uncertainty. But you're still positioned, uh, with an opportunity to maximize what we, what we have here. So, again, um, Wednesday, I'll come back with some, some tax examples for you, because that may be, uh, something that I can help you improve upon, understanding a little better, and answer any questions that you would have too, that I didn't follow or, or have tonight. So, before I completely open it up, I'll just say again, I want to thank some people sitting behind me, because again, this is not just me, it's, it's a lot of people. And you'll be going on maternity soon, so. So I, I don't know if any of you had any questions that you needed answered, if you want to talk to me privately, or want to do it here, that's fine too. But I'll be back on Wednesday with some more information. And hopefully, this has helped you.
So I was in here last year. With the Wednesday community engagement session, what is it, is it this format? Do people come in and out? How does that work?
Um, well, my understanding too is that I'll, I'll present some information, as I stated. And if someone, uh, or the public do want to speak on a particular subject, just as any other public comment, they'll be able to come up and, and do so. That's my understanding.
So it's like a public hearing, essentially?
It's like what we do at our meetings when we have, or, or, with the other public engagement opportunities. We are able to engage with people that are.
Okay. So what, um, so, but what if people can't come on Wednesday? Because I've had people say they can't make it. Is there something, you know, I would love to be able to, to send a link for them online so that they could look at the budget? The proposed budget?
I'll have it on the district website tomorrow.
Tomorrow? What did you say their go-to initially on the district website?
That's in those pictures that go across the top.
So they'll click right on this row to you later.
Wait, hang on.
Can you put that on the screen?
Okay, right, I see it. You just click right on that picture, or that image?
And that, those pictures, they're here too.
That image will rotate, right? I mean, there's, so you might have to wait for it.
Yeah, I'll be asking them to move it up to the top one first.
So it'll be the first thing they see, okay?
So then on there, there'll be a link to get to the actual budget, to go through it?
Yes, we'll have a budget book up there, presentation, and then.
So when you say presentation, the PowerPoint?
This book.
And then the, um, uh, the record, I mean, the TV part, the video. When will that be available, if people want to watch?
I think in a couple days, and then that's up.
Okay. So it'll be up before the hearings.
So if they were able to come, or they would be able to do this sometime tomorrow, they could come on Wednesday and have questions answered or engage in conversation if they wanted to?
Yes.
Thanks.
Can you beam that PowerPoint to us, please?
Sure.
Sure. John, I'd like to follow the answer, but I didn't ask the question very well before because I see the answer on the back. The Fund 30, it's a separate levy and it all comes from the, the 89 million is the total levy. But now, when those are broken out, the Fund 30 levy, do we set that or is that set statutorily? I mean, do we decide internally how much we wanna put in there?
We have a debt schedule that when we pull in those notes, that we establish and work with Baird to put together. And when we are making shifts in a refund, as I'm proposing here, that means we're changing the steps or changing the dollar amounts for subsequent years.
Okay, but it's our call then?
It is our call, but we have a fiduciary responsibility to meet a certain dollar quota every year and we need to manage that and we've been doing that.
Okay.
I'll go 100%. Your question's taken, John. That was very, very helpful, I think.
I could add, I know John early referenced and maybe we talked about the open enrollment piece and we've got that moving forward. The actual surveys will go out to families who have not, who have chosen to open and roll out, but also to families who didn't come as well. I think that the piece that we're seeing, and this is the piece that's confusing, is that that particular number that we see appears to be a decline in enrollment because when we looked at our open enrollment data, and I wanna make sure I'm looking over at John and Lori to confirm, our open enrollment data would tell us we're up less than 20 students more that had opened and rolled out and we have more than 50 students from last year coming in. So, we're really trying to discern how many students have actually exited the district. In other words, how many have actually moved out of the district out of that number, which is a new environment that we haven't been in in the past. I know that last year Lori and I looked at one school alone and could see that a fair number of those students had actually physically, their families had moved out of the area from different parts of the state, out of the state and even out of country. So, we're trying to discern that number. Hopefully, we'll get a better handle on that before the next meeting to discern if we are in a declining enrollment or if we've got students that are simply either not here and haven't been here so far, just getting a better sense of what that means. We don't know right now.
So, do we need to see to make that motion moving forward or? Okay. So, if there's no more questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the 2018-19 budget as presented, modified, be approved.
Second. So, it's as presented, we didn't make any...
As presented, okay.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
It's confusing. Every year I have to...
It's not adopted, it's approved.
Not adopted, we're just approving what we've been given.
Okay.
So, the final adoption is what will happen on the, October 29th?
Right, after public hearings.
After the, so we have our 12th engagement session on the 17th of October at 6 o'clock and then we have a public hearing if people wanna come and speak to us at that point and the special board meeting to adopt it.
So, what are they saying right now?
We're accepting it.
We're receiving it. So, like I have, I'm saying yes, I have it in my hands.
Yeah, we're approving that it's what the proposed budget is today and we can't be fine yet because we don't even have the final numbers or anything to do with that. So, it's not, it's not adopted until two weeks...
Approved, received, we're not adopted.
We're not.
Got it.
But it does sound confusing.
It sounds like we're approving and then...
That's why I asked.
We have that conversation every year.
I'm gonna restate my motion and I move that the receipt of the 2018-19 budget as presented be approved.
Second. Great. Sadie?
Lori?
Hi.
What, time, dark?
Hi.
Sinica?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Karen, 60. And we've gone over the next two important meeting dates and at this point I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
On your favor?
Hi.
All right, we'll restart our review of our meeting at 1:30.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.